...about a special work session, city council meeting. It's an order. We do have a forum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council record. They will be given remarks in three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authorities of the city council. The citizens of the city council will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may place the item on file. Take the matter under advisement. Refer the matter to staff or committee for future report or direct matter to replace the matter on the agenda. Anyone else to speak?
My name is Teresa Scorsese. I live at 209 First Street Southeast. This, my statement involves the sign ordinance and the code of conduct as distributed at the last council meeting. City of Little Falls is not following the Supreme Court's decision allowing people attending government meetings to exercise their free speech rights as fully as possible. Excuse me. Rule number three, prohibiting signs which are attached to a stick or a pole. Rule number seven, prohibiting clapping, cheering, feet stomping, and other vocal expressions of support for or opposition to a speaker. And rule number eight, restrictions on photographs, audio tapes, and videotapes are particularly problematic, infringements on free expression. None of those rules seem like reasonable time, space, or place and manner restrictions, especially rule number three. The rules of conduct for the city of Little Falls state in no event shall signs, placards, banners, props, or similar items be larger than eight and a half by eleven inches, or illuminated, or be attached to any pole, stick, or other device. These proposed rules are illegal under the current sign ordinance, which states signs provide an important medium through which individuals may convey a variety of messages. Interior signs are allowed. That's a sign which is located within the interior of any building or within an enclosed lobby or court of any building. Purpose and intent is not the purpose, it is not the purpose or intent of this section to regulate the message displayed on any sign, nor is it the purpose or intent to regulate any building, design, or any display not defined as a sign, or any sign which cannot be viewed from outside a building. Provide for fair and consistent enforcement of the regulations, again, this is part of the city's promise, set forth under the zoning authority of the city. If you want to limit signs on the interior of this building, you must by law amend the sign ordinance. The law is clear.
My name is Bill O'Hara. I live at 1214th Street Southeast. And back when we were in fact, very tiny town, we didn't have any drainage problems whatsoever. Then we were forced to join the city. Well, the city comes in and they just made a total mess of things. I mean, they did that work late in the year. It was nothing but a soupy mess. That spring, it was nothing but a quagmire. They came in and truckload and truckload and truckload of gravel. I mean, put it this way, I'll guarantee you 14th Street is the only street in town that is a foot higher than the alleys coming into it. You know? Well, I can deal with the, with the road being ironed, but they also removed two culvers and replaced them. Now, they removed them culvers at the lowest spot of the place, and then moved to the highest spot of the place. I mean, that one culvert that they put in there, the water will stop draining. I still got 20,000 gallons of water in my yard. I mean, I shouldn't have to pump my yard so I can cut grass. I mean, I would like to see them culvers put back where they were, so that my yard drains. I mean, do you have any problem with that? Good, so when's the work gonna start?
Don't, there's usually not a discussion here at the public council. This is where you tell the council your issues and then it's later.
Well, I just got done telling you that I'm sick and tired of having to pump my yard to cut the grass. I mean, how much longer do I have to put up with the inconfidence of some city idiot?
Well, that's the way to get to like action.
I mean, I think it's kind of funny that some Polacks from Pike Creek can do a better job than some overpaid book smart city engineer. You know? I mean, I would like to see this problem fixed. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. I would like to donate this drawing titled "New Iraq" by a 13-year-old Syama Saad of the Iraqi Art Project to the city of Little Falls in honor of Sammy Rasuli, director of the Muslim Peacemaker Teams. I purchased this work of art at an event at the Franciscan convent where he spoke to help the following efforts: the Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project and Muslim Peacemaker Team's efforts. I would like it hung next to the pencil drawing "Creation of Man O.A. in the foyer of the Carnegie Library." In 2009, Minneapolis residents worked with the city council to pass a resolution approving a sister city relationship with Najaf, Iraq. Since then, the relationship has been managed by government officials of both cities and by two nonprofit organizations: the Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project in Minneapolis and the Muslim Peacemaker Teams in Najaf. Activities of the sister city relationship have involved 12 professional and friendship delegations between the two cities, a water sanitation program that has provided clean water to more than 40,000 students, and hospital patients in the Najaf area. Displays of artworks from the Najaf area at more than 50 galleries and public spaces in the Minneapolis area, the exchange of hundreds of letters between students and adults of the two cities, bringing Najafis injured in the war to Minneapolis for medical treatment and other projects. The Iraqi Art Project brings Iraqi art to the United States and presents Iraqi and American visual art, film, book, theater, lectures, and panel discussions to further dialogue around Iraqi culture, the war and occupation, healing and reconciliation, and the two countries' shared future. We support the rebuilding of relationships, cultural understanding, and respect in a country torn apart by decades of war, sanctions, and occupation. We focus on the arts, education, cultural, and professional exchange, and water and sanitation projects. We are Iraqis and Americans, veterans and refugees, peace activists and artists, students and professionals, and many others united by our work for reconciliation. This foundation was started in July of 2007. The mission of the Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project is to promote reconciliation between the people of the United States and Iraq in response to the devastation that has affected Iraqi families, society, and culture. IARP recognizes the common humanity of the people of Iraq and the people of the United States. And I just realized tonight that I didn't fill out the back of this form. I didn't realize I got a few things I have to fill in there. I've owned this since 2014, and it's very appropriate to hang next to that drawing. And I've included this information for you as well. Where would you like me to bring this? What would you like me to do with this?
For a rapid donation form.
Okay, well.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Joey Scott Olson, 14797 Timber Trail on the topic of the code of conduct. Regarding the June 7, 2013 city council meeting, the Morrison County Record told readers in their September 15 publication that only those members who complained that they couldn't see were allowed to move out of the public gallery when, in truth, council invited everyone in the public gallery to move away from Robin Hensel and her hat, even people on the opposite side of the room, despite the fact that there were only seven members of the public in attendance that night with over 50 available seats in the public gallery nowhere near Hensel's hat. Had the council followed their own policy and held itself to a code of conduct that prohibited them from using their council positions to protest and harass community members for exercising their constitutional rights of free speech, there would have been no basis or opportunity for all that subsequently transpired two days later. The draft code of conduct as it is currently written is willfully ignorant. First, you have several areas that any civil rights attorney would deem highly problematic in the head. In fact, every area where council members are allowed to deviate from uniform and standard protocol based on their individual discretion is an opportunity for them to violate the civil rights of members of the community and to censor public input based on viewpoint, which is unconstitutional. It is this precisely that is and has been the trigger to all lawsuits brought against the city of Little Falls. Whereas the draft code of conduct proposal restricts members of the community, it makes no effort to restrict city council or city officials, which is a careless disregard of fact, history, as well as the financial interest of taxpayers and the community. Continuing to pretend that city officials are faultless in the ongoing lawsuits is a dishonest facade, just like the stanchions that taxpayers paid for when the city, when the city council, in fact, had invited members of the public to move out of the public area, everyone but Robin Hensel. Council didn't move people with an obstructive view. They invited everybody in the public gallery to move in repudiation of Robin Hensel's lawful exercise of her constitutional right to bring a sign and to wear a hat with a protest message on June 7, 2013. The draft code of conduct does nothing to correct or restrict willful displays, overreactions, and non-constitutional protests by city officials, and will serve in no way to guard taxpayers against future litigation against the cities for these failings.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I would like a second moment if you'd like.
Do it one time. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if it's two times according to your ordinances. Individuals may speak twice.
That's public hearing, that is not public forum. Thank you. Please take a seat. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on. Any discussion on bills? Any discussion on the consent? Capital improvement work, correct?
Yeah, the one item that I wanted to real quick bring up to the council, just as an FYI, we're looking at our capital improvement plans for, for next year. The one item that we've got here that we're looking at is 8th Street Southeast, basically one block over from our street construction project this year. We're looking at going from Trump Avenue 27 all the way down to Fifth Avenue. We'll see that coming forward here in the next month, which is in terms of a request for feasibility reports. We do have a couple of petition projects that will be coming forward as well in terms of feasibility reports, but this is the one that is the staff initiated that will be looking at, pursuing, because the sanitary matter is bad. So FYI, we'll be looking at 8th Street Southeast.
Questions for Rick? May I on Miller? Constituent, please?
Yes, I guess the handicap access button outside, open the door, isn't working. Are you aware of that?
We are. It's, there's something in with the code, the electronics in there. We're, we're working on getting it fixed. We are aware of it, and we're working on getting it fixed, yes.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I had complained on the noise from the outside. I'm planning to break. I talked about that once before. I'll get you the name and make sure that it's zoned where it's going to be. He didn't tell me what time.
Yeah, give me the name and the area, and then I'll, I'll take a look at it. We'll go from there.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I had a constituent tell me that they had witnessed a drug deal in their neighborhood and photographed it and called the police, and the police said they were not interested in having it photographed.
Hearing none, we'll adjourn from the planning meeting, and we'll go right into the regular city council meeting. October 2nd, 2017, 7:30, call the order. We go a forum, please stand, pledge their flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, made invisible with the liberty and justice
All individuals are asked to either silence, turn off cell phones, pages, or other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda, approve the agenda as posed in accordance with the open meeting law. Here and place all agenda items on the table for discussion. What's the wish of the council? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Gushick to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries approval of the minutes. It's a copy of the minutes for the special work session meeting of September 18, 2017, and the regular city council meeting of September 18, 2017, and the closed meeting of September 18, 2017 are enclosed. What's the wish of the council?
I would just approve. Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Canapla, second by Councilmember Wilderin to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries approval of bills, check number 97222 through 97295, totaling $513,000, or $513,105.64. What's the wish of the council? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Mayor Zoka, second by Councilmember Lunder. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries award, donation, presentation, proclamation, donation. Gophers organized for Little Falls.
So we're, we're all on either the extravaganza or the gophers organized for Little Falls. I'm Tom Clark. This is Dee Henowski, Pat West, our founder Al Bowman, Jim Weiss, and Richard Colskow. Colskow, Dick Colskow. And we wanna, we wanna give you guys our check of $7,000 for one fifth of our commitment towards the equipment purchase we made. We have that, and we also have $500 for community service with the gophers program that they put on during the summer. We have a check for his investment of $500.
May I on your, like, join for a photo?
Sure. I gotta go off. Before I start, let's try and get that. Side face in, or side against. Thank you, Mayor.
Did it always in here?
Yep. Thank you. Thank you very much. Call me. Yes.
Turn it on, off, is that button right there? Got it. Okay. Alrighty. Thank you.
We're gonna have to wait for it. I'm trying to find it. It's probably morning.
We're gonna, we're still on, kinda like, we'll watch it, and then we'll have to go over. There we are, and flash flood watch until 6:00 AM tomorrow.
We are?
Yes.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, no, they're expecting between this weekend up until probably the overnight, probably four inches total.
Jeez.
No, this is, starting from yesterday, we'll be into late tonight, maybe early tomorrow. Here's what it is. The whole system's moving. It gets cold on it.
Like, Saturday, Saturday and Sunday, I think we took George's stage.
No, we had, we had, the rain has actually, we had two inches total, starting yesterday. So, no, Saturday, actually, it wasn't raining.
Oh, Saturday was beautiful.
Yeah, Saturday was beautiful, but the cold front showed up on Sunday and decided to be havoc.
Yeah.
That should be most of it.
Bet there weren't many culvers today.
No.
Boy, yes.
I appreciate you hearing this.
You know, we always get rain falls.
Oh, that's right.
Nothing knocks the leaves on the trees.
It's just the fruit is like...
I dig the yellow.
What are you doing with all this in the box under it?
I don't know.
What did I have?
We're going big, 'cause I don't know if I wanna go here right now.
Get your mind out. It's just terrible. Just terrible.
Not good.
Yeah, I was good since last time.
I haven't seen you either.
Yeah, what are you doing? Seen your wife, didn't see you.
Yeah.
She can talk in a mouth more than I do.
She does, she don't let that shelf bite on you?
No, I've been starting on work and on buildings lately.
I'm trying.
Yeah, putting up an addition on the shop there, and then she got my, 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 my thing, two of them, that's all I do today. Three blocks, I'll be in that, that's all. One set up, and just a three hour job, you know, for that six hour job.
Oh. I have to go. I have to go.
Teresa, did you get one?
Uh, an agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
I don't know if I could've got one.
I don't know.
I don't think we did, but one was on the list.
This week and then this week.
This weekend or this week.
I'd like to see you soon.
What do you want, Trish?
I need to wait for it.
Well, they don't.
Oh, yeah.
I would have been there with about 1:41 and, oh, it's not just that.
I'm with G.
How do you?
I'm with G.
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 Okay, we gotta get on these.
Spring, the water in the fridge.
Teresa, did you get one?
Uh, an agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
I'm bored, I'm diabetic, I'm a sore.
I don't know if I could've got one.
I'm down north.
John Scott.
Okay.
We're up, so.
We never is.
I need to protect myself.
I'm very far as this group.
For all of you, you know, are you ever...
Oh, I don't think we did, but one was on the list today.
This weekend, or probably this weekend or this week.
I'd like to see you soon.
What do you want, Trish?
I need to wait for it.
We might, we might be in charge another time.
But they don't.
Oh, yeah.
I would have been there with about 1:41 and, oh, it's not just that.
I think we're, we're also, it's too nice to be around.
I'm with G.
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 I don't have that.
I'm with G.
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 That's a good state.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
I do.
I do.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
I'm with G.
She didn't find, she didn't even know I had it.
Uh, she's, she's been, she's been here.
Yeah, no, she's been out.
Was she in Florida?
Uh, no.
She was sort of singing, singing for us, and then now she's searching, and it's all
like, school, I guess, it's something.
I would say like, I'm a little bit.
Seven?
Yeah.
Kind of 500 people, but I was, 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 I[1760.13] You know, where, you know, sort of, they have. Lord Church has for a single day, it was used to buy the white. So they count, it's really close one. They put it in, in any direction. They've got the most important staff. Uh, it's a church called Saint Anthony's. Uh, it's literally the making of this, it's even on the record. Uh, two boards and, uh, combined with Saint Joe and yours, and depending on. Uh, because it was actually supposed to be in, uh, the office in one of those, uh, guys. And then I'm sure they put it out, uh, it's crap. But open was open, so you're talking a thousand percent church for a five hundred percent. Both of those ones, and it's, it's actually a church. So it's all, really, really. Paulman. Age of Samia, very, very. Yeah, it's, uh, open as the, uh, to me, it seems like it's, uh, so. Oh, yes, very. It's seven hours. My mom did, she did nothing.
So they stayed there?
Yes, she, uh, she rent the house. Three bedroom house, seven. Can I get a little question, Jack? What do you miss? Well, it's, it's funny. Well, I'm very big up. She had her pets of the whole.
They, they get a day off.
It's actually someone who's counted. Yeah, they start off, they're really ill. They also see all the, they, they probably started. Second week of, uh, second week of work, they're working the bars. They get off, they may have a. Oh, yes, she almost here. I mean, if you, if you just, if you just say, same year. Probably went by, I was doing a straight white shot, so. Nothing crazy yet. I do it for fun. I mean, literally, I mean, I, well, I was calling, video, I'm not going to be quite. I'm required for this. I mean, I didn't keep the call, I wasn't calling, I didn't call. Your score's gone, and it was a week ago. Either how many videos or, uh, print days, audio. They're all missing. Well, we're all in the phone line. I, I knew a radio station in New York City that does more video than New York City. I knew a radio station in New York City that does more video than the local, than the local city. Yeah.
Seven fifteen, a special work session, city council meeting, our order. We do have a forum, public forum, individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not included on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council record, delivering remarks of three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items opposed to the authorities of city council. During the city council, not take official action on items discussed at this time, or may place the item on file. They can either render advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to replace the agenda. Anyone else to speak?
My name is Teresa Corson, I live at two oh nine First Street Southeast. This, my statement involves the sign ordinance and the code of conduct as distributed at the last council meeting. The city of Little Falls is not following the Supreme Court's decision allowing people attending government meetings to exercise their free speech rights as fully as possible. Excuse me. Rule number three, prohibiting signs which are attached to a stick or a pole. Rule number seven, prohibiting clapping, cheering, feet stomping, and other vocal expressions of support for or opposition to a speaker. And rule number eight, restrictions on photographs, audio tapes, and videotapes are particularly problematic, infringements on free expression. None of those rules seem like reasonable time, space, or place and manner restrictions, especially rule number three. Uh, the rules of conduct for the city of Little Falls state in no eventual signs, placards, banners, props, or similar items be larger than eight and a half by eleven inches, uh, or illuminated or be attached to any pole, stick, or other device. These proposed rules are illegal under the current sign ordinance, which states signs provide an important medium through which individuals may convey a variety of messages. Interior signs are allowed, that's a sign which is located within the interior of any building or within an enclosed lobby or court of any building. Purpose and intent is not the purpose, it is not the purpose or intent of this section to regulate the message displayed on any sign, nor is it the purpose or intent to regulate any building design or any display not defined as a sign or any sign which cannot be viewed from outside a building. Provide for fair and consistent enforcement of the regulations, again, this is part of the city's promise, set forth under the zoning authority of the city. If you want to, uh, limit signs on the interior of this building, you must by law amend the sign ordinance. The law is clear.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Bill Char, I live at one or two Fourteenth Street Southwest. And back when we were in fact, back a town ago, we didn't have any drainage problems whatsoever. Then we were forced to join the city. Well, the city comes in and they just made a total mess of things. I mean, they did that work late in the year, it was nothing but a soupy mess. That spring, it was nothing but a quagmire. They came in and truckload and truckload and truckload of gravel. I mean, I, put it this way, I'll guarantee you Fourteenth Street is the only street in town that is a foot higher than the alleys coming into it. Well, I, I can deal with the, with the road being higher, but they also removed two culvers and replaced them. Now, they removed them culvers at the lowest spot of the place, and they moved to the highest spot of the place. I mean, that one culvert that they put in there, the water stopped draining, I still got twenty thousand gallons of water in my yard. I mean, I shouldn't have to pump my yard so I can cut grass. I mean, I would like to see them culvers put back where they were. So that my yard drains. I mean, do you have any problem with that? Good, so when's the work gonna start?
Donors usually have discussions here at public council, this is a teleconference.
Well, I, I just got done telling you that I'm sick and tired of having to pump my yard to cut the grass. I mean, how much longer do I have to put up with the incompetence of some city idiot?
Well, that's the way to get rid of action.
I mean, I, I think it's kind of funny that some poll rocks from Pyre Creek can do a better job than some overpaid book smart city engineer. You know? I mean, I would like to see this problem fixed. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hensel, eight oh seven First Street Southeast. I would like to donate this drawing titled New Iraq by thirteen year old Saima Saad of the Iraqi Art Project to the city of Little Falls in honor of Sammy Masuli, director of the Muslim Peacemaker Teams. I purchased this work of art at an event at the Franciscan convent where he spoke to help the following efforts, the Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project and Muslim Peacemaker Team's efforts. I would like it hung next to the pencil drawing Creation of Man O Eight in the foyer of the Carnegie Library. In two thousand nine, Minneapolis residents worked with the city council to pass a resolution approving a sister city relationship with Najaf, Iraq. Since then, the relationship has been managed by government officials of both cities and by two nonprofit organizations. The Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project in Minneapolis and the Muslim Peacemaker Teams in Najaf. Activities of the sister city relationship have involved twelve professional and friendship delegations between the two cities, a water sanitation program that has provided clean water to more than forty thousand students, and hospital patients in the Najaf area. Displays of artworks from the Najaf area at more than fifty galleries and public spaces in the Minneapolis area. The exchange of hundreds of letters between students and adults of the two cities, bringing Najaf, Najafis injured in the war to Minneapolis for medical treatment and other projects. Iraqi Art Project brings Iraqi art to the United States and presents Iraqi and American visual art, film, book, theater, lectures, and panel discretion to further dialogue around Iraqi culture, the war and occupation, healing and reconciliation, and the two countries' shared future. We support the rebuilding of relationships, cultural understanding, and respect in a country torn apart by decades of war, sanctions, and occupation. We focus on the arts, education, cultural, and professional exchange, and water and sanitation projects. We are Iraqis and Americans, veterans and refugees, peace activists and artists, students and professionals, and many others united by our work for reconciliation. This foundation was started in July of two thousand seven. The mission of the Iraqi and American Reconciliation Project is to promote reconciliation between the people of the United States and Iraq in response to the devastation that has affected Iraqi families, society, and culture. IARP recognizes the common humanity of the people of Iraq and the people of the United States. And I just realized tonight that I didn't fill out the back of this form, I didn't realize I got a few things I have to fill on there. I've owned this since two thousand fourteen, and it's very appropriate to hang next to that drawing. And I've included this information for you as well. Where would you like me to bring this? What would you like me to do with this?
Bring it back to the donation form.
Okay, well.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Yeah.
Joey Scott Olson, one four seven ninth seven Timber Trail, on the topic of the code of conduct. Regarding the June seventh, twenty thirteen city council meeting, the Morrison County Record told readers in their September fifteenth publication that only those members who complained that they couldn't see were allowed to move out of the public gallery when, in truth, council invited everyone in the public gallery to move away from Robin Hensel and her hat, even people on the opposite side of the room. Despite the fact that there were only seven members of the public in attendance that night with over fifty available seats in the public gallery nowhere near Hensel's hat. Had the council followed their own policy and held itself to a code of conduct that prohibited them from using their council positions to protest and harass community members for exercising their constitutional rights of free speech, there would have been no basis or opportunity for all that subsequently transpired two days later. The draft code of conduct as it is currently written is willfully ignorant. First, you have several areas that any civil rights attorney would deem highly problematic in the head. In fact, every area where council members are allowed to deviate from uniform and standard protocol based on their individual discretion is an opportunity for them to violate the civil rights of members of the community and to censor public input based on viewpoint, which is unconstitutional. It is this precisely that is and has been the trigger to all lawsuits brought against the city of Little Falls. Whereas the draft code of conduct proposal restricts members of the community, it makes no effort to restrict city council or city officials, which is a careless disregard of fact, history, as well as the financial interest of taxpayers and the community. Continuing to pretend that city officials are faultless in the ongoing lawsuits is a dishonest facade, just like the stanchions that taxpayers paid for when the city, when the city council, in fact, had invited members of the public to move out of the public area, everyone but Robin Hensel. Council didn't move people with an obstructive view, they invited everybody in the public gallery to move in repudiation of Robin Hensel's lawful exercise of her constitutional right to bring a sign and to wear a hat with a protest message on June seventh, twenty thirteen. The draft code of conduct does nothing to correct or restrict willful displays, overreactions, and unconstitutional protests by city officials, and will serve in no way to guard taxpayers against future litigation against the city's for these failings.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I would like a second moment if you'd like.
Do it one time, thank you.
I'm sorry, if it's two times, according to your ordinances. Each individual may speak twice.
That's public hearing, that is not public forum, thank you, please take a seat. Anyone else wish to speak? There are none, move on. Any discussion on bills? Any discussion on the consent? Capital improvement work, correct?
Yeah, the one item that I wanted to, uh, real quick, uh, bring up to the council, just as an FYI, we're looking at our capital improvement class for, uh, for next year. The one item that we've got here, um, that we're looking at is Eighth Street Southeast. Um, basically one block over from our street construction product this year. We're looking at going from Trump Avenue twenty-seven all the way down to Fifth Avenue. We'll see that coming forward here in the next month, we're still in terms of a request for feasibility reports. We do have a couple of, um, petition projects that will be coming forward as well in terms of feasibility reports, but this is the one that, uh, is a staff initiated that will be looking at pursuing, because the sanitary matter is, is bad. So FYI, we'll be looking at, uh, Eighth Street Southeast.
Questions, correct? Anything on the other? Constituent complaints?
Yes, uh, I guess the handicap access button outside, open the door, isn't working. Are you aware of that?
We are, it's, there's something in with the code, the electronics in there, we're, we're, we're working on getting it fixed. We're aware of it, we're working on getting it fixed, yes.
Anything else?
Mr. President, I had, uh, complained down the noise from the Altona Plan, getting great, I talked about that once before. I'll get you the name and, um, I'm sure that it's, uh, zoned, uh, where it's going to be, uh, he didn't tell me what time.
Okay. Yeah, give me the name and the area, and then I'll, I'll take a look at it, we'll go from there.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I had a constituent tell me that they had witnessed a drug deal in their neighborhood and photographed it and called the police, and the police said they were not interested in having it photographed.
Anyone else? There are none, we'll adjourn the planning meeting, and we'll go right into the regular city council meeting.